Try that again. Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Kettering City Council. Today's date is November 22, 2022. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, thank you for your abundant blessings and surrounding us with stewardship and a supportive community in Kettering. We thank you for the ability to engage in useful work and for the honor of bearing these important responsibilities. We are grateful for your boundless love for all of us. Please continue to give us the strength and compassion with which to serve and to grant us the wisdom to make appropriate decisions. Help us remain humble and grateful for the opportunity to lead. Guide this council so that we may work in harmony while serving our citizens with integrity and purpose. Allow us to fulfill the responsibilities entrusted in us by our residents. I would like to recognize our Miami Valley Communication Council TV operator, Mike Sparandee. Mike, thanks for your assistance. I would like to call on Mrs. Fisher at this point for a motion to approve the minutes for the last meeting.
Your Honor, I have reviewed both the workshop and the council meeting minutes for November the 8th, and I do find them in order, and I move for their approval.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass.
Yes.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. DuVall.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mayor Laner.
We have no proclamations or special presentations at this point. Well, we do. We have an appointment to be made. We are appointing Tyler Trent. Tyler, where are you?
I don't think he's here.
He's not here tonight?
Mm-mm.
Okay. Tyler Trent is being appointed to Partners for Healthy Youth. His term is ending 12/31/24, and may I have a motion to approve it?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Okay. All right. Now, we have a promotion ceremony for the Kettering Police Department. This is always a fun thing to do, and we'll let Chief Protsman take over at this point.
Thank you, Your Honor, and good evening. It is my pleasure tonight to introduce to you the four newest supervisors for the Kettering Police Department. First, I would like to introduce Lieutenant Andrew DeSalvo. Andrew, you want to step on up, please? Andrew is here tonight with his wife Liz, his son Nico, who I filled full of sugar earlier, so I apologize for...
[laughing]
His mom and stepfather Debbie and Tim, his brother Adam, his grandparents Judy and Clay, his grandmother, who everybody knows, Mama DeSalvo.
[laughing]
His cousin Ronnie and Amy, and his aunt and uncle Mindy and Ronnie, and his aunt Robin. So Andrew was hired by the City of Kettering in 2009 and was promoted to sergeant in 2018. Andrew holds a Bachelor of Arts degree in sociology and criminology from Otterbyne College. Andrew has served the department in many capacities, including the Internal Affairs Sergeant, a road sergeant, a patrolman, a canine handler, a canine trainer, our canine supervisor, a SWAT team member, and currently serves as our SWAT team commander. Andrew, thank you. Next is Lieutenant Ryan Vandergrift. Ryan is here tonight with his wife Diane, his daughter and son, Leila and Andrew, his father Randy, and his sister-in-law and nephew Laura and Ashton Lee. Ryan was formerly with the Clear Creek Township Police Department and was hired by the City of Kettering in 2008. Ryan was promoted to sergeant in 2021. Ryan holds an Associate's Degree in Criminal Justice from Xavier University and is currently taking classes to obtain his Bachelor's Degree. While at Kettering, Ryan has served as a patrol officer, a detective, a member of the SWAT crisis negotiation team, an evidence technician, and a road patrol sergeant. Ryan, thank you. Next, Sergeant Mike Martin.
He's hidden back there.
Mike is here tonight with his wife Renee, his parents Michael and Carol, and his brother Joe. Mike holds a Bachelor of Science degree in computer engineering technology from the University of Dayton. Mike came to the City of Kettering from the Van Dalia Police Department and was hired as a patrol officer in 2013. Mike served in the U.S. Army and deployed twice to Iraq. Mike, we greatly appreciate your service. Thank you. Mike has worked at the police department as a patrol officer. He is also a team leader for the SWAT team. He is a force options instructor and a field training officer. Mike, thank you. And Sergeant Brian Robinson. Brian is here tonight with his wife Tiffany, his daughters Isabella, Haley, and Emma, his father Andrew, his mother Tina, his mother-in-law Lisa, and his brother-in-law and girlfriend Donna and Heather. Brian is a graduate from St. Clair Community College with an Associate's Degree. Brian came to the City of Kettering from the Springboro Police Department in 2016. Brian is a patrol officer, was a patrol officer. He's a member of the hostage negotiation team and a field training officer and is also on our bike patrol unit. Brian, thank you. These gentlemen went through a very intense and stressful promotional process. They went through a written test, an assessment center, had input from their supervisors, and had to do an executive interview as well. And that's not to mention all the good work that they've done over the years to show that they deserve this, and we know that they'll do a good job. So, gentlemen, thank you. We're going to have their family members step up to the front, please, who's ever going to pin the badges, and anybody else who would like to come in with them. So we always see who will poke who first, right? Whenever you're ready, please.
It's a race.
Thank you. So I asked them to pull some numbers for me earlier, and we have eight patrol officer positions that we have to fill right now. When we fill those positions, we will have 24 officers who have been with the Kettering Police Department less than three years.
Wow.
That is over a quarter of our sworn staff that we have. Be a lot of direction that's needed, a lot of guidance on what is expected from our residents. I've known that for quite a while. I knew the type of people that I wanted to lead, the groups that are coming up, and it's certainly these men right here because they do a great job. So, gentlemen, thank you very much. I appreciate it. I'm sorry, you know what? I forgot. So there's one other thing that we like to do. Depending on your rank, the higher up you are, usually the more you have to do at events. So I'm going to ask Lieutenant DeSalvo and Lieutenant Vandergrift to come up and say a few words. The two sergeants are lucky enough, they have...
[laughing]
Okay. Well, that's a lot of people. I don't know if you can hear me. I just want to say thank you to everybody for all your support. I wouldn't be here without all of you. And as I said, when I got promoted to sergeant, I'm dedicated to the City of Kettering. My family and I, we spent our lives working for the City of Kettering, for the citizens, and devoting everything we can to the City of Kettering. And I am here to stay, and it's, again, my pledge to serve you and the citizens of Kettering to the best of my ability. But again, thank you, all of you, and to my coworkers, my friends. Everybody's played an integral part, and I can't name everybody off because I'll forget. But of course, most importantly, thank you to my wife and my family for their support because without them, I definitely wouldn't be here. Thank you.
Mayor, Council, it's an honor to be here with you all tonight, and everybody who's shown up for us tonight. Really appreciate you taking time out here tonight to be here with us. It is a very young department, as the chief said, but we have a tremendous staff as far as officers on squad, personnel that work with us, and really do a great job. Just a tremendous department. Honored to be here, be a part of it, and serve in this position, and I'm honored for this opportunity. Thank you very much.
Mayor, they don't mean to be rude, but we do have a small reception for them downstairs, so I think them and their families are going to head that way. So thank you very much. We appreciate it.
I'd like to just add a comment or two. You know, one of the things that I think just really stands out in Kettering is the professionalism of our police force. And I'm always amazed when I'm sitting in a restaurant or something over at Town and Country and a couple of policemen come in, and they seem to have to like to eat a lot. But, no, seriously, when they come in, I'm always struck with the way they carry themselves. They carry themselves as people who not only care about the citizens of this community, but that are ready and alert to do whatever they might be called upon to do. I love you guys. Congratulations for those who have been moved up today. It sounds like with the youth in the department, we're going to have a lot of promotions coming up, right? But thank you so much, and Godspeed. Go eat.
Stay safe.
Gee, we just lost our audience.
Mama DeSalvo's is close to that, that's why.
They always are.
See you, Amy. When?
I'll be back from a turn at the lab.
Oh, okay. Good luck. Okay, I'll watch you, boy. Okay, bye-bye. Hey, Ryan. There goes...
Where they having?
He runs the restaurant.
I think in our...
He's the one from the restaurant.
I assume in our room.
Mom, Ronnie. Want to just walk back to Salvo?
Maybe I'm wrong.
And when that... That was Mama down there.
Yeah, that was Mama.
Yeah. But he has the restaurant side. His brother has the other side, the deli side.
Amy, come on. All right. I've been wrong. Oh, there's Judge.
Yep. Okay.
Brad's...
Okay. Well, they left our kind of empty chambers, but... Good thing there are no public hearings this evening. And I'm going to read this even though I know darn well there's no one here to speak. I don't know what gave me clue, but "Anyone wish to speak before council with comments or new information about the legislation on tonight's agenda may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Speakers must state their names and address. Comments should be addressed to council. If you have comments that are not about the legislation on tonight's agenda, there will be an opportunity for those to be heard later in the meeting." Don't see anyone.
Seeing none.
Seeing none. We'll now move to ordinances and second reading. Maybe wait a second for the sound to die down. There are no ordinances and second reading tonight, so we will move on to resolutions.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to contract with the PNR Communications for installation of a radio repeater system at the Kettering Police Department. Its estimated cost is $45,123. That's also what is available. It is requested by the Public Service Department, and I do move for approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. I'd like to call on Mr. Schwederman for comment.
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution will allow us to enter into a contract for the purchase of a repeater in the Kettering Police Department's building. The contract will be with PNR Communications. The $45,000 repeater system will allow our radios to transmit and be heard throughout the police department. Obviously, it's below ground and a lot of concrete, so we need additional equipment to make sure that that signal carries throughout the police department. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Schwederman? Seeing none. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass.
Yes.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. DuVall.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mayor Laner.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to amend Resolution Number 10732-22 regarding the purchase of two accessible vans for the Lathrum Senior Center transportation program. The estimated cost is $116,000. That is the amount budgeted. It's requested by Parks, Recreation, and Culture Arts Department. I move for approval.
Second. Mr. Schwederman.
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution amends a previous resolution for the purchase of these two accessible vans. The original resolution had an estimated cost of $86,000. The resolution before you to amend that is now $116,000. The city has identified a vendor who is able to supply us with the two vans for that total cost. The vans are minivans with a rear access handicap ramp for the wheelchairs. This is part of our senior transportation program at the Charles High Lathrum Senior Center. The funding for this project will come from the Lathrum family donation, a million-dollar donation that was made, I believe, late 2021. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Mr. Duke?
No questions, just a comment, Your Honor. As many folks know, you know, the world's trying to go to EV vehicles, and I know we looked for that in this opportunity, and they were not available. But in the future, this is something council is very serious about, and as far as I know, the Sustainability Committee, which I represent, feels very strongly about the issue that our future vehicles hopefully can be EVs. These were not available at this time. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Duke. Any other questions? Okay, then call the roll.
Mr. Kleipass.
Yes.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. DuVall.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mayor Laner.
Yes.
Mayor Laner, I have a resolution to make supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city for Kettering, State of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2022. I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Schwederman.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is our citywide supplemental that we do at the end of each year to ensure that all of our financial accounts have a balance greater than zero at the end of the calendar year. So some of these items are absolutely needed and others are kind of a safety net for what might happen the remainder of this year. The first item is for the mayor and council department. It's an additional appropriation of $5,000. In previous budgets and in this budget, our travel was reduced. However, we resumed travel this year in the council office, and so we'll need an additional $5,000 for that item. The city manager's office will have a supplemental appropriation of $88,000. This funding will be utilized to account for the fact that we will have two employees for the month of December, and then also for the leave payout for my position. The Planning and Development Department will receive an $87,000 supplemental. The majority of these funds will be for the funding of our nuisance abatement program that resulted in additional unbudgeted demolitions during the year. Our fire department is one of those departments that will get some money just in case. It's an appropriation of $50,000 for personnel services in case overtime is greater than anticipated for the next six weeks. Again, we're not anticipating needing those funds. The street maintenance department will receive a supplemental appropriation of $280,900. This appropriation will be for the funding and for the accounting entries related to the purchase of salt for our salt bin. The state highway fund will receive an additional allocation of $35,000. These are expenses that are allocated from our street department to the state highway fund for the maintenance of our two state highways, Far Hills and State Route 835. These costs are greater than anticipated because of the higher cost of supplies throughout the year. This is a non-cash transaction, simply an allocation between funds. We'll also be appropriating $7,000 for the state highway fund Far Hills project. This is for additional costs related to the project. This total cost of $7,000 will be reimbursed by grant funding. The police... Excuse me. The police pension fund will also be receiving a $15,000 just in case we need it for personnel pension costs related to the police department. The DESI reuse fund will receive an additional $10,000 in funding. This will help us cover the cost of the increased water usage due to the new irrigation systems at the main entryway to the Kettering Business Park. $125,000 will be appropriated for the Phase II of the Rosewood construction project. This funding will be utilized to remedy existing conditions that were unknown during the construction, mainly the construction of two additional structural walls that during demolition were beyond repair. The last item for capital improvement will be $20,000 for the Rosewood Furniture Fixtures and Equipment Grant, and this is to move up a Phase III project, which is 2023, into 2022 because of the long lead time for some printmaking equipment that will cost approximately $20,000. So moving it up will allow us to order it now in hopes that we will have it in time for the opening of the new renovated center in the fall of 2023. Your Honor, that's a long list of appropriation items. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions? Okay, seeing none, call the roll.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. DuVall.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass.
Yes.
Mayor Laner.
Yes. We now move to ordinances and first reading. I believe Mr. Scott, with you.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have an ordinance to enact Chapter 949 of the codified ordinances regarding public tree preservation, and that is requested by... This is long. Requested by Planning and Development Department, first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Robillard. We have need a second. First reading, sorry. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Laner. The real purpose of this ordinance is twofold. The one is to codify the establishment of a tree committee. Currently, the Parks Board does have a subcommittee that acts as a tree committee. This codifies that. The second thing is to provide regulation or standards for the planting and protection of trees on public property throughout the city. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay, first reading. We will now move to certifications and petitions. I'll call on Shawna Kaczynski. Do we have any tonight?
Your Honor, we do not have any certifications or petitions.
Okay, thank you. We'll move to our city manager's report. Community update.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have a number of slides for you this evening. First is just to remind everybody that the Medicare open enrollment period is quickly coming to an end. The last day to do that is December 7. Residents who would like to take advantage of the service at our senior connection can contact the Kettering Connection at 296-3330 for an appointment. We are currently about halfway through the second round of leaf pickup, certainly taking a lot longer than normal for the second round because so many leaves fell during the heavy winds a few weeks back. So we'll continue through the second round and then move into the third round probably in roughly seven to 10 days. If you have any questions about where we are in the community with leaf pickup, you can call the leaf hotline at 296-2472. Thanksgiving holiday, the administrative offices will be closed on Thursday, the 24th, and Friday, November 25th. The Rumpke service will be delayed on Thursday, so Thursday's collection will be on Friday, and Friday's collection will be on Saturday. We will once again have the holiday tour of lights, and if your decorating skills for the holidays would insist that you participate, contact our volunteer office at 296-2433. I believe our deadline for accepting households is December the 19th. Small Business Saturday is this Saturday, November 26th. I'm sure there will be other comments about that, so that's all I will say. The Yard Debris Center is scheduled to close for the season on Saturday, December 3. This is just a reminder that when you set out your leaves, you're setting out your leaves. Your yard debris should not go out with the leaves, but you can take it to our Yard Debris Center up until December 3. We have a different meeting scheduled because of the holidays, so our first meeting in December will be on the first Tuesday, December 6. We will have a budget workshop at 5:30, followed by our council meeting. And then on December 13, we will have our second meeting, a regular workshop at 6:00 PM, and the council meeting at 7:30. We will have a joint meeting with the school board, which will be hosted by the city, at the community room at fire headquarters on November 29, next Tuesday, at 6:00 PM. The mayor's tree lighting will take place on Friday, December 2. The event will last from 6:00 to 8:00 PM with the tree lighting at 6:30. And we will once again have the Christmas Day gathering at Poland Farm on Christmas Day, the 25th, from 1:00 to 4:00. It's a great event for the community. We encourage everyone to stop by. Your Honor, that's all I have for you for the community update.
Can I...
Thank you very much, Mr....
Mark, would you clarify on the leaf collection that November 28th is not the last day?
Right there? There will be another pass through the city, I believe. We would like everybody to have their leaves out to the curb, frankly, now. But please try to get that before we start our last run-through. We hope that the third round will be our last run-through, and about November 28th, we'll be starting that third round. So if you're in District 1, it would behoove you to have your leaves out certainly by that date. Frankly, we'd like everybody to have their leaves out by that date so that when we make that final round, we catch everybody. If we miss you, call us. Let us know. We'll come back and get you, but help us by being ready by the 28th.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Kleipass, for calling on that. Okay. We will now move on to the opportunity you have to speak before council. If you missed your opportunity earlier in the meeting, now is your chance. Apparently, nobody wants to speak.
Maybe Mike. Get Mike down there.
Okay, we'll call on Mrs. Fisher to be the first person to give an update.
So, Your Honor, I have had a lot of activities over the last couple of weeks, but I'll highlight just two of my faves. Mr. Kleipass typically goes to the Mideast Cross Country meet, and that was this past Saturday. And if you remember how warm it was that Saturday, ha-ha-ha, there were 40 mile-an-hour winds, and those high school kids from Indiana, Ohio, and Michigan were out there in shorts running. Got to see the meet, them finish. They gave it their all. It was fantastic, and I feel honored that I was able to give recognition to that group. It does bring a lot of economic benefit to our community to have all of...
the holidays would insist that you participate, contact our volunteer office at 296-2433. I believe our deadline for accepting households is December 19. Small Business Saturday is this Saturday, November 26. I'm sure there will be other comments about that, so that's all I will say. The Yard Debris Center is scheduled to close for the season on Saturday, December 3. This is just a reminder that when you set out your leaves, you're setting out your leaves. Your yard debris should not go out with the leaves, but you can take it to our Yard Debris Center up until December 3. We have a different meeting scheduled because of the holidays, so our first meeting in December will be on the first Tuesday, December 6. We will have a budget workshop at 5:30, followed by our council meeting. And then on December 13, we will have our second meeting, a regular workshop at 6:00 PM, and the council meeting at 7:30. We will have a joint meeting with the school board, which will be hosted by the city, at the community room at Fire Headquarters on November 29, next Tuesday, at 6:00 PM. The mayor's tree lighting will take place on Friday, December 2. The event will last from 6:00 to 8:00 PM with the tree lighting at 6:30. And we will once again have the Christmas Day Gathering at Poland Farm on Christmas Day, the 25th, from 1:00 to 4:00. It's a great event for the community. We encourage everyone to stop by. Your Honor, that's all I have for you for the community update.
Can I?
Thank you very much, Mr. Duke.
Mark, would you clarify on the leaf collection that November 28 is not the last day?
I will clarify.
There will be another pass through the city, I believe.
We would like everybody to have their leaves out to the curb, frankly, now. But please try to get that before we start our last run-through. We hope that the third round will be our last run-through, and about November 28, we'll be starting that third round. So if you're in District 1, it would behoove you to have your leaves out certainly by that date. Frankly, we'd like everybody to have their leaves out by that date so that when we make that final round, we catch everybody. If we miss you, call us, let us know, we'll come back and get you, but help us by being ready by the 28th.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Kleipass, for calling on that. Okay, we will now move on to the opportunity you have to speak before council. If you missed your opportunity earlier in the meeting, now is your chance. Apparently, nobody wants to speak.
Maybe Mike. Get Mike down there.
Okay, we'll call on Mrs. Fisher to be the first person to give an update.
So, Your Honor, I have had a lot of activities over the last couple of weeks, but I'll highlight just two of my faves. Mr. Kleipass typically goes to the Mideast Cross Country Meet, and that was this past Saturday. And if you remember how warm it was that Saturday, ha-ha-ha, there were 40 mile-an-hour winds, and those high school kids from Indiana, Ohio, and Michigan were out there in shorts running. Got to see the meet, them finish, they gave it their all. It was fantastic, and I feel honored that I was able to give recognition to that group. It does bring a lot of economic benefit to our community to have all of those states travel to us and hand out awards. Second activity was the Dayton Literary Peace Prize Awards Ceremony. Four winners. I will tell you the theme through all of the books that happened to win came from multiple perspectives, but they all focused on solving inequality. Very moving stories. Each author that spoke, spoke to the heart, and so it was fantastic. So I have, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kleipass.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I just want to mention that on Veterans Day, most of us were able to attend two different ceremonies on that day. The first was at Delco Park, and we had a nice turnout, but it rained and rained and rained. Wasn't wind like you ran into, but a lot of rain, but a nice turnout in spite of that. Almost reminded me of a Spasnak event. And then quite a few of us attended the annual Veterans Day program that JFK Elementary puts on, and that's always a great event. The whole school is packed into that gym, and kids put on a great program to honor our veterans. Also, I do want to mention that on the 17th, and maybe some others will too, I mentioned that was the annual volunteer appreciation luncheon, and the mayor was able to talk to the group in the same way with the city manager, and talk about how much the volunteers mean to our city and the value that we put on them and they put on us by being able to do that. So that was a great event and good to have it happen again. And last but not least, you're going to have a lot of chances to shop Kettering this week. One is on Black Friday, and the other, as the manager reminds me, is Small Business Saturday. So let's get out and shop Kettering this weekend. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks. Mrs. Hall?
I just want to say Happy Thanksgiving to everyone for Thanksgiving Week, and I am thankful for my family and that we have such a safe city to live and serve in with such great services as Kettering. I also want to mention Miami Valley Meals is having a turkey takeaway tomorrow, and frozen Thanksgiving meals are going to be given out a number of places in the area on a first-come, first-served basis, and the locations and times are online. Happy to see the news about the Air Force coming to Kettering Business Park today in the newspaper and renting 152,000 square feet of office space, so, sorry? Oh. And I was also grateful to attend National League of Cities on behalf of our council and just amazing resources there and a lot of exciting opportunities for improvements in cities. And our own Bruce Duke was named to the board again this last week, and congratulations to him. Hope to see everybody at the next Christmas, next Friday, mayor's Christmas tree lighting.
Thank you. Mr. Scott?
Thank you. Earlier this month, I was one of the representatives to the, of council at the MVCC. We had the annual budget review, and I'm proud to say that MVCC is on stable ground financially for the great service they provide to televising our council meetings as well as other sporting and other events they do for all the south suburbs. I also want to echo what Mr. Kleipass said about the vet ceremony at Delco. I was proud to attend that with my son-in-law, Seth Shope, who is a multiple Afghanistan tour veteran and an Army Ranger, and his son, the littlest vet who was there, Jax, my grandson who is four. And lastly, this is Thanksgiving weekend. I hope everybody has a great holiday, and I, like many thousands of Kettering residents at noon time on Saturday, will be watching the Ohio State Buckeyes hopefully subdue those evildoers from Ann Arbor.
Thank you, Ms. DuVal.
I would like to start by congratulating the officers who were promoted this evening. Congratulations to them. I want to echo what Mr. Kleipass said about the Veterans Day programs at Delco and JFK. They were great programs. The Leadership Academy had our education day last week, and I want to thank everyone from the Kettering schools who helped with those days. It's always so informational. And lastly, I want to say after every election, I look at the election data a few days after, and I look at, mainly I'm looking to see the age groups who voted and to see if the young people are voting. But this time, I noticed something different. The oldest resident in Kettering to cast a vote in this last election is 102 years old. This woman not only voted, she voted in person on Election Day. She went to the polls, and I just think that's amazing, and may we all be so engaged in